2017 City of Port Orchard City Council Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I would ask that everyone joins me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. [Crosstalk] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move forward to the approval of the agenda. Was there any amendments that are being requested this evening? Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I would like to, on the consent agenda, I would like to move the approval of the work-study session to our business items.
Okay, so 4B, and we're going to move that to 7G. Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda by moving item 4B, which is the approval of the September 19th council work-study session minutes, to business item 7G. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the main motion. Are there any other amendments or discussion items? I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second. By Councilmember Donlin, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as been amended. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, that's right.
We will move on to citizen comments. We have two citizen comment periods tonight, the first one being comments that are germane to any item on our agenda this evening. So if you have any comments that you would like to make regarding an agenda item, please step to the microphone at this time and identify yourself. Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
And a second by Councilmember Donlin. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. We have a presentation this evening. Kathleen Wilson is here to talk about the Kitsap Regional Library levy proposition. Thank you for joining us, Kathleen.
Can I add something to talk about? I think I've written a letter, and I recently bought a really good book called The Story Life of A.J. Fickery by Gabriel Severn. It's a book about a man on the coast of Massachusetts who lives on an island and owns a small bookstore.
I think your mic's not quite on. There we go.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Now you can hear me.
Can you repeat that book?
The Story Life of A.J. Fickery. And he owns a bookstore, and above his bookstore is the quote, "No man is an island, every book is the whole world." And really, that's what we are, we try to be at the library, opening up new worlds of learning. And not just through books, but through our online databases, our resources, through our programs and our presentations, and through the community connections that we facilitate. So why is the library asking for funding now? We asked you, we asked multiple citizen groups, individuals, what was important to them in their library? What did they want to see with their library service? And we know that we need to focus on STEM education, we need to focus on our facilities, and we need to focus on technology training and early literacy. So if the levy passes, we'll be able to increase spending in all of these areas. We'll be able to invest more in our programming, in our technology, and in our collections. And this means that we'll be able to get the items to our users much more quickly, we'll be able to have better technology at our disposal to share with our citizens, and we'll be able to increase the number of programs that we're able to have. We also, when we were talking, out talking to our community, we realized, and we realize every day in the Port Orchard branch, that we don't have enough seating in our buildings, we don't have enough community meeting areas. Currently, as you know, in our city-owned building, the meeting room that we have at the library is not accessible after hours. And that's something that's really needed in our community, is a meeting space that can be accessed during non-library hours. So we're looking at the potential for finding ways to make that possible, and looking at increasing the places to study and read in all of our facilities. If the levy passes, we'll be able to add Sunday hours in five of our large locations, including the Port Orchard branch. We had to cut back our Sunday hours several years ago during the recession, and we would love to put those back into place. And more consistent hours across our branches. Some of our branches still don't open until 1:00 p.m. on Mondays and Fridays, and so those branches would be open at 10:00. But if the proposition fails, we won't be able to invest in our facilities, and many of our facilities are aging and they have delayed maintenance that needs to get done, and that just wouldn't be able to happen. We wouldn't be able to put as much money into our collections, and that includes all of our collections. And we would have to close an additional day in all of our locations. So we would only be open five days a week. And we would survey our communities to find out which day made the most sense to close. We wouldn't just close a day without taking into consideration the makeup of each community. The worst part is, we would have to close one large location and one small location. With the funding that we have right now, it wouldn't be sustainable to maintain all of the branches that we currently have. So the library system would have to look at closing two locations over the next five years. And a question that I'm getting a lot is, which locations would that be? But we don't know yet, that hasn't been determined. We're not investing a lot of time into looking at which location makes the most sense to close first, because we're really hopeful that that's not going to happen. And we would definitely have to eliminate bookmobile service right away. That's something that's pretty, it's not as cost-efficient, and so it is an expensive service, and we just wouldn't be able to sustain it. So right now, the library's financially solvent, we have, this is how we kind of divide up the funding that we do receive. As you can see, most of it goes into services and programs, 10% to our technology, 16% to our system support, 11% to our spaces, and 17% to our collections. So a question that I get too is, are there other sources of funding for the library, or can't you just make up your, make this up through donations? And we do have some excellent donors at the library. We have eight Friends of the Library groups, our Friends of the Library in Port Orchard, really help provide a lot of the extras that the library system can't fund. But we can't depend on our donors to really sustain us for, over the years, with our basic needs. We have lots of volunteer help. Last year, we had over 1,500 volunteers, and that's over almost half a million dollars worth of volunteer time. So we do have a lot of both in-kind and volunteer donations, as well as monetary donations. And we did build the Kingston, the new Kingston Library through community partnerships and private donors. And we're looking to build the Silverdale Library completely with private donations as well. So this levy would not be funding the building of that library. So what would this levy entail? It's eight cents per thousand of assessed property values, so that works out to be about $24 for a property that's valued at $300,000. So right now, we have a levy rate of 35 cents per thousand, and it would go up by eight cents. So we'd be looking at 43 cents, and that would add about $3.43 million to our 2018 operating budget, which would allow for all of the increases that I mentioned earlier. And it's a levy, not a bond, that's a question that I've been getting asked as well. Would it continue to go up after that? No, we would be limited to the 1% per year cap that we have now. So the election is on November 7th, and the ballots are coming out on October 20th, which is a date that's marked on my calendar. And we have our website, we have a page just dedicated to facts about the levy. And this is our mission statement, inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more. That's what we aspire to. And these are the faces of the library. One of our main tenants at the library is that the library builds community, we're free and open to all. We're the cornerstone of the community, and we want to help everyone, babies to seniors, providing equal access to education, information, and technology. So these are our nine libraries, nine diverse communities that we serve. And then, of course, we have our mobile services. Last year, we checked out 2.1 million items, physical and digital. And we have 83,614 cardholders, although I think this number has gone up since we worked on this PowerPoint, because every day we're making lots and lots of new cards at the Port Orchard Library and all over the system. But we do make the most cards at the Port Orchard branch, because we just have such an influx of new citizens. We have more than 1,100 storytimes a year at our libraries, and 15, almost 1,600 classes and events for kids and teens, serving 44,384 last year. This year, we had 24,776 kids, teens, and adults participate in our summer learning program. And here's a mom and daughter who read for their 100 hours, and they each got their t-shirts. And we had 2,550 third graders come to our branches and get their library cards and go on their library tour. And that's a program that I'm really proud to say started in South Kitsap. We've been doing that program for 11 years now, and we've had almost 10,000 third graders in South Kitsap go through. So last year's graduating class were the first class of third graders, and since then, every single South Kitsap third grader has come to the library and received their library This is something that we started in 2016, is our internships, our STEM learning internships for teens. And this was grant-funded through a grant that we received from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. And we would really like to be able to continue this program. It's been so valuable to see the difference it's made to the teens that have gone through it. Teens have 100-hour internships, they work for five hours a week, and their focus is on STEM learning and job readiness. We had 815 one-on-one appointments, and this is something that I think a lot of our citizens are not aware, that they can make an appointment with a librarian and will spend up to an hour on technology questions, or job readiness, resume writing, whatever is necessary. We have 19 bookmobile stops, and we have over 250 community partners. So we're working with all different kinds of community organizations, and small businesses, large businesses. We really want to facilitate, working with as many community partners as we can, if it makes sense. So if you have a question, you can always ask me. And then here are our Board of Trustees. Bev Chaney is our South Kitsap representative, and she was the South Kitsap Superintendent of the South Kitsap School District several years ago. And here's our leadership team with our library director Jill Jean. Thank you so much for having me. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions, comments? Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to our business items. Business item A is adoption of an ordinance repealing Port Orchard Municipal Code subsections 20.38.706 and 20.38.707, view protection overlay district trees and foliage. Mr. Bond?
I would just like to offer, to recuse myself. I do live within the view protection overlay district, and I do have vegetation that influences my neighbors' views.
Well, I should then recuse myself on the same grounds.
And then I would have to also...
Let's start with, is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with any council members that would be involved with tonight's discussion or vote? No, then I think we should continue.
Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
Thank you. Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 20.38 Overlay Districts contains regulations for the city's view protection overlay district, which was established in 1999. At the city council meeting of August 22nd, 2017, the city council discussed concerns about ongoing enforcement provisions in Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 20.38.706 and 707 regarding the planting and maintenance of trees and other foliage consistent with the view protection requirements. That new trees and foliage in the view protection overlay district should be limited to certain species, and that no tree or foliage should be, or shall be planted that does or could unreasonably obstruct views within the view protection overlay district. Since no inventory was taken prior to adoption of ordinance 1785, back in 1999, of the existing trees within the view protection overlay district, and there is no data on the location, species, size, and existing obstructions, if any, created by those trees at the time the view protection overlay district was created. Without a baseline against which to measure the additional growth and obstruction of views from existing trees and to document which trees and new plantings since the VPOD was created, enforcement of this provision by the city is impractical and would not be based on reliable information. The language in subsection 20.38.707, which states that a person may not unreasonably obstruct a view from or sunlight reaching the primary living or entertainment area of any other parcel or property, creates additional enforcement concern since no definitions are provided as to what constitutes an unreasonable view obstruction, or what qualifies as the primary living or entertainment area. Additionally, much of the VPOD includes steep slopes, which are subject to the Critical Areas Regulations protecting trees within geologically hazardous areas. It is also inconsistent with the critical, the intent of the Critical Areas Ordinance to require that trees within a geologically hazardous area be removed to protect or enhance views, which could result in soil instability, erosion, and a slide movement. Based on these concerns, the city council requested that the planning commission review the existing subsections 706 and 707 and indicate whether the commission would support the council's repeal of these regulations. The planning commission discussed this issue at their September 5th meeting, and held a public hearing on October 3rd, and voted unanimously on October 3rd to recommend that the city council repeal or delete these sections from the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Staff recommends that the city council vote to delete POMC Sections 20.38.706 and 707 from the municipal code.
Great, thank you.
Pro Tem? I move to adopt an ordinance deleting Port Orchard Municipal Code Subsections 20.38.706 and 20.38.707.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Any discussions?
Yes. Nick, is there any plans to replace this with any other form of view protection?
Well, the view protection overlay district still limits the height of buildings, and so it's very easy to measure the height of a new building and to ensure that it's not going to block somebody's view.
Yeah, they don't grow.
Yeah, vegetation is a different story. We require landscape plans for multifamily and commercial development, but most of the view protection overlay district is zoned for single-family development. So we don't have a requirement that somebody prepare a landscape plan, and thus, the city is not approving what gets planted where. And we have, you know, as we mentioned, we have no idea what was actually in the ground at the time that rule was passed, and presumably, our code wouldn't prevent an existing tree from continuing to grow. So it's really impractical to deal with the vegetation as part of the view protection overlay district. And I should add that in other communities throughout the Puget Sound, I mean, people buy view easements from their neighbors and work together to ensure that trees are trimmed, and nothing in our code prevents somebody from buying an easement from their neighbor to ensure that something is maintained at a certain height. But that's a voluntary agreement that somebody is entering into, and they would potentially have to go through a Critical Areas Code process to get a permit to remove a tree on a steep slope or hazardous area.
I, Nick, at the public hearing on October 3rd, were there any comments from the public?
There were not.
There were none?
We've talked about this at work-study, and we've talked about the difficulties of trying to enforce such an ordinance, and when you have words like "unreasonably" or "significant" or "an entertainment area," it's really subjective and make it difficult for us to draw the line. And I think other jurisdictions have faced the same kinds of challenges, and so increasingly, I think we're seeing places pulled back from regulation, and I think that's consistent with what we're seeing here as well.
I should add, I think at the work-study, council had asked what other communities have regulations like this, and we checked, and we're the only one that does anything like this that we found on the peninsula or in our immediate vicinity.
Further questions or comments? Okay, well, we have a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance deleting Port Orchard Municipal Code Subsections 20.38.706 and 20.38.707. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7B is an adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapter 20.12 to remove definitions relating to signs. Mr. Bond?
On June 27th, 2017, a new sign code, Chapter 20.132, was adopted for inclusion in Title 20, the city's Unified Development Code. With the adoption of the sign code, which contained its own definition section, the signed definitions that were in the Uniform Development Code's Definitions Chapter became redundant. As a housekeeping measure and to ensure clarity and prevent confusion, staff proposes that the signed definitions in the UDC's Definitions Chapter, that's 20.12, be deleted. No changes will be made to the adopted sign code in Chapter 20.132. Just to add to that, if you remember, we adopted the Uniform Development Code and the sign code within two weeks of one another, and so somewhere in that shuffle, the old sign code went away, but the definitions didn't go with it because they were being moved to a different section. And so this will just clean up that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Please.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the revisions to Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.12 as presented.
I'll second it.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing that there's none, we'll move to a vote. Are voting to approve an ordinance, an ordinance adopting the revisions to Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.12 as presented. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Business item 7C is an adoption of a resolution repealing Resolution Number 019-17 Procurement Policies and Procedures and adopting updated procurement policies and procedures. Janee?
On April 11, 2017, we adopted Resolution 019-17. To establish policies and procedures which set forth standards of conduct and written procedures for procurement in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations. In reviewing the newly adopted policies and procedures, city staff determined that some portions of the document would benefit from clarification. In addition, as the city has since been reclassified from a second-class city to a code city, some second-class city references were removed and/or updated with code city references. Recommendation is to approve the resolution to repeal Resolution 019-17 and adopt the revised procurement policies and procedures as presented.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution repealing Resolution Number 019-17 and adopting the revised procurement policies and procedures document as presented.
Second? Second by Councilmember Deener. Discussion.
I would just offer, the, most of what we're talking about is cleanup items, moving from the second class to the code city. However, what would be on Page 7 or 120 of our packet, under contracting and purchasing limitations, a clarification was requested, and this was discussed at the Finance Committee. And that support that reads, "Contracts or purchases exceeding $7,500 and are not consistent with the adopted budget needs council approval." Staff wanted clarification and a dollar amount in there. And that $7,500 was, I believe, taken from the local and state purchasing requirements. And it seemed like a reasonable amount to the Finance Committee, and so we gave the nod to move it forward and bring it to council.
Any other comments? Deener, none? We'll move forward to vote to adopt a resolution repealing Resolution Number 019-17, adopting the revised procurement policies and procedures document as presented. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Business item 7D is an approval of an amendment number one to contract number 018-16 with Lighthouse Law Group for City Attorney Services. I will take this one. So in summary, in the City of Port Orchard's City Attorney Services Agreement with Lighthouse Law Group, PLC, Contract Number 018-16, the city has agreed to a retainer model of compensation. When the agreement commenced, a retainer of 70 hours for $12,250 per month for the services of certain attorneys, and an extra retainer rate for attorney Jeff Tarraday of $250 per hour, was agreed upon based on the immediately foreseeable needs of the city and the staffing of Lighthouse Law Group. In recent months, it has become clear that due to the current needs of the city and changes in staffing at Lighthouse Law Group, a change in the retainer model is desirable. Lighthouse Law Group was asked to propose a new retainer model, which has been documented in the attached amendment number one to contract number 018-16 with Lighthouse Law Group for City Attorney Services. Under this new retainer model, the city would agree to a retainer of 60 hours for $10,500 per month for the services of certain attorneys, and additional seven retainer hours for $1,750 per month for the services of attorney Jeff Tarraday. These numbers are based on the average hours billed to date in 2017. The amendment to the retainer model benefits the city by including Jeff Tarraday's hours in the retainer and decreasing the available attorney hours by just three, and keeping the overall monthly retainer cost to the originally budgeted $12,250 per month. The mayor recommends approval of the proposed amendment number one to contract number 018-16 with Lighthouse Law Group for City Attorney Services. Fiscal impact is anticipated that this amendment will save the city an average of $1,750 per month.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve amendment number one to contract number 18-16 with Lighthouse Law Group for City Attorney Services as presented. Second?
Second by Councilmember Chang. I'll just add, in my discussions on this particular issue, it's really just a changing of some of the needs of the cities and the different attorneys with their different specialties used at the Lighthouse Law Group. A lot of the, of the work that has been done over the last year and a half, those tasks have kind of come to an end, and now we're starting to engage with Jeff more often, and so it just tweaks this retainer model. Again, does not cost any additional money, but better defines the retainer in this contract. Any questions or concerns?
My comment would simply be to applaud Sharon Cates for the work she's done for us that's allowed us to reduce the monthly hours that we need her. us that's allowed us to reduce the monthly hours that we need her. And so I appreciate very much the work you've done for the city. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll be voting to approve amendment number one to contract number 018-16 with Lighthouse Law Group for City Attorney Services as presented. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on to item number E. This is an acceptance of the Tanner and Payne right-of-way deeds as need for required road improvements to Ramsey Road Southeast and Blueberry Road. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and city council. As a condition of approval for the developer-based construction of Endazio and Blueberry Ridge residential plots, off-site road improvements to both Ramsey Road Southeast and Southeast Blueberry Road were required. As a function of road improvements constructability, the developer has secured the additional right-of-way needed to complete the required improvements from Tanner, which was Lot B of Short Platte, 3907, and Payne. I don't know why that says Lot B. I think that's Lot A. Yeah. Should be Lot A of 3907. The staff recommends that the city council accept the Tanner and Payne right-of-way deeds as needed for the construction of the required road improvements to Ramsey Road Southeast and Southeast Blueberry Road.
Call for a motion. Councilmember Donlin.
Mayor Protem, I move to accept the Tanner and Payne right-of-way deeds as needed for the construction of the required road improvements to Ramsey Road Southeast and Southeast Blueberry Road.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Ashby. Discussion.
What were the specific improvements?
The road improvements are the conditioned off-site improvements that originally came from the county for Endazio and Blueberry. As this was a developer-based improvement, not a city-based improvement, it was the developer that had to go out and secure any additional right-of-way in order to build those road improvements. So on Ramsey, the improvements were just bringing the road to a minimum road width, shoulder and ditch. On Blueberry, the improvements are much more extensive. So I guess if you really wanted to see what those specific improvements are, we could provide the plans, the approved off-site plan. But basically, it's almost a complete reconstruction of Blueberry. And I believe there is some sidewalk on Blueberry on the one side, right?
Yeah, north side.
The north side. There's the actual intersection of Blueberry and Bethel that's getting what I'll call an interim light until our corridors, Bethel Corridor Study is complete and we ultimately decide what will happen with that particular intersection. And again, Ramsey, it's just more of bringing that up to, at this point, kind of a minimum rural-ish road section until that area develops further.
My question is more just logistical. Are those right-of-ways deeded to the city? Is that why we have to approve the deeds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it becomes city right-of-way.
It becomes a city-owned right-of-way.
Right.
Okay.
Additional comments?
I have a question which may not be answerable. Do you feel that they acquired sufficient width in these, especially on Ramsey? Based on like this drawing, if this drawing is reflective of any of what I think are the widths, it looks like what they're acquiring on Blueberry, if that's what I'm looking at, is much more significant than what's on Ramsey. Ramsey doesn't look like very much is, did they get enough?
Yeah, they only needed five feet. So, and again, the road improvements on Ramsey weren't as extensive as the road improvements on Blueberry. So, you know, so they've acquired through their surveyor and their engineer the amount of right-of-way needed to build those improvements. Now, if the city ends up in 20 years or if there's another significant development that comes out of some potential comprehensive plan changes, Ramsey could be improved drastically through those. And at that point, depending on if it was a city project or another developer-based project, you could see additional right-of-way need through here. But as this developer was just meeting the conditions of their specific development, they really couldn't, the city couldn't compel them to take more than what they needed just for their improvements.
I would just offer the comment to Councilman Chang is that the conditions of approval of those developments were not done by the city, they were done by the county. It was disappointing to me that more upgrade of Ramsey was not required because Ramsey, it would appear to me that Ramsey's going to get significant more traffic and that more should have been expected. But that was not our decision.
Right, and things changed when West Coast Fitness was built. Quite honestly, Geiger was going to be, Geiger and Blueberry were going to be the main thoroughfares. And really, West Coast Fitness was a bit of a game changer. And that happened after these two plots had gone through the county process and then came into the city. So everybody, it's kind of a moving target, so we'll just kind of see really what happens in the next decade or so.
Are there additional comments on this item? And we'll move to vote to accept the Tanner and Payne right-of-way deeds as needed for the construction of the required road improvements to Ramsey Road Southeast and Southeast Blueberry Road. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to business item 7F, an approval of a letter to West Sound Utility District requesting the joint sewer advisory committee meetings be recorded.
Good afternoon. At the September 26, 2017 council meeting, it was noted the sewer advisory committee meetings are not being recorded as requested by West Sound Utility District. Councilmember Ashby asked the city to readdress this issue as members of the council and public should have the opportunity to listen to discussions held during the meeting. The motion for consideration is to approve the city council members to sign the attached letter.
Councilmember Chang?
I move to approve that city council members sign the attached letter and send it to West Sound Utility District, asking for the sewer advisor committee meetings to be recorded.
Second?
We have a second by Councilmember Luca Reli. We have discussion on this topic. Further to what we had discussed in our last meeting.
It is the only committee meeting that's currently not recorded.
Yeah.
So it's logical.
I wasn't up for it about that.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I'd ask that we vote to approve that city council member sign the attached letter and send to West Sound Utility District, asking for the sewer advisory committee meetings to be recorded. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to 7G, which comes from the consent agenda that we amended down. And this is the approval of the September 19, 2017 council work-study session minutes.
Yes, and I, in reading the minutes, I-
I think we should need a motion to approve first before discussion?
Well, I want clarification.
Okay.
Or there may be an amendment.
Don't we usually have the discussion after, once we make the motion?
Yeah. Well, we can do it either way.
Yeah, I think we should probably carry a motion forward.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Protem, I make a motion to approve the work-study session meeting minutes of September 19, 2017.
Second?
Great, we have a motion and a second now. I think we can move to discussion.
Okay. We have, at the dais, was a correction. When I read the minutes on the section of our discussion with the West Sound Utility District, you could see we did have one clarification that was made for me. And then as I thought about this later, if we go down to the next paragraph, it says, "Community Director Bond gave an overview reminding the council that during the comprehensive plan process and there were allocations to the city, was required to resize zoning to match." And if the county acts, the council will need to rebalance the buildable lands capacity through the UGA. And I'm not sure that it's our city council. That's why I was wanting clarification from Community Development Director Bond. Is it our council? Is it the county? Is it KRCC? I mean, who actually rebalances that buildable lands report?
Well, I think the buildable lands report is prepared by the county, but if you're proposing an amendment to the urban growth area, either the person proposing that amendment would need to show how they have balanced capacity and the expected growth. And so that would either be West Sound Utility District, it would be the city, or it could be the county, depending on who's initiating that proposal. So I think in our conversation, we talked about either West Sound preparing that analysis or the city or the county doing it if we needed to look at that. But I can work with a clerk and correct that.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say that I appreciate the revised minutes because I think that more accurately reflects my recollection of what the discussion was about. It was actually the district's appeal of the council's comprehensive plan that was the topic that he brought up.
Further comments? If there's none, we'll move forward to vote to approve the council work-study session meeting minutes of September 19, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move forward to the reports of council committees. We'll start with finance. You want to tackle that back? Or did we have a?
I'm trying to remember. It was reported?
Yeah, it was reported already.
It was reported on, okay.
So the next meeting is scheduled for October 20, 2017, 7:30 a.m. here at City Hall. Economic Development and Tourism.
Yes, we met yesterday and we started our meeting with a present, I don't want to say presentation, with conversation with Brady Miller, who, and this was under our downtown business discussion, the half hour we have at the front of every meeting. And Brady Miller and his wife own the Bay Street Bistro. But in Brady's day job, he is a strategic planner for large national corporations. And so he came in and gave us just an overview on branding and reminding us that branding is not a logo or colors. Branding is a, more of a lifestyle feel and how to develop pride in Port Orchard and I'm proud that you're from Port Orchard. And also from businesses. I mean, it was not just for the city, it was for our business community. Anyway, we very much appreciated Brady taking time out of his busy schedule to come in and speak with us. Our next agenda item was welcome packages, packets that we do for new businesses. And basically, the distribution of that, we've had welcome packets for a year now, but we haven't distributed them. We had just a little malfunction in how that piece of the operation was going to happen. So we are now working on a better plan and those will be going out through the Community Development Department. We then had our first look at the summer foot ferry ridership numbers. And, you know, they looked healthy. We have not yet got the financial report from the summer service that we and the city of Bremerton have provided. So when we do have the financial reports, we will be scheduling our annual meeting with the city of Bremerton and our other partners on the summer foot ferry. And we will definitely include Kitsap Transit in that this year because they did take over some of our hours last year. We then had Nick Bond brought forward some traffic accident information on our three east-west corridors, Bay Street, Tremont, and Sedgwick. And looking at those, Councilman Donlin asked us if we would, if the council would please revisit our feather sign discussion that we had a month ago. And so we requested that be put on a work study before it comes to council for a vote. And then Director Bond then went over our comprehensive plan amendments that we've looked at and reviewed the maps one more time. And that was our meeting. And we will be meeting again the second Monday of November, which I believe would be the 13th. We meet at nine o'clock here in council chambers.
Thank you. Utilities Committee?
I will be meeting October 16 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. And Sewer Advisory?
And that is January 17, 2018, here at City Hall, 6:30 p.m.
Thank you. Land Use?
Land Use will be meeting October 18 at 7:30 a.m. at DCD's conference room.
Any updates on lodging tax advisory?
The next committee meeting is scheduled to be Monday, the 16th at 7:00 p.m. And we're hoping for a quorum.
And location of that meeting?
I think it's Carolyn Powers' conference room.
Can I ask for clarification on the sewer advisory committee? Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Yes. It is, but I think you have to run into the, if there's more than three council members at a meeting thing, that just has to be announced.
Right, but the public can attend.
Oh, yeah, they're all public.
Yes.
Great, moving on to Festival of Chimes and Lights.
Our next meeting is next Monday here at 3:30 p.m.
And our next work-study session is next Tuesday, October 17, right here in City Hall, 6:30 p.m. And we will move on to the report of the mayor. There will not be one this evening, his mayor is out of town on business. But we'll move to report of department heads. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. First, I'd like to report that during councilwoman's presentation, that was not an earthquake, that was somebody's subwoofer as they cruised through town. So I don't want to alarm anybody that we need to evacuate the building. Second of all, hopefully you're avoiding Tremont, but if you're not, you will have noticed that we've moved into phase one, traffic control. So phase two is where they take traffic onto Tremont Place and Alder. But phase one is where they reducing down to the two narrowed lanes to do, you know, like more substantial shoulder work. So we're in officially phase one. Soon, some projects that we've talked about, but hopefully contracts that we're going to get underway still in 2017. We will see the Well 9 construction that will be coming to you in November. Hopefully, Endazio or Annapolis Creek, we'll be interviewing at the end of this month. And there's a chance that we'll have that also in November for that design of the Annapolis Creek project. McCormick Park, we're still hopeful that we'll get that out this year. We're waiting for the architect to go through and freshen up everything and then we'll get that out to bid. And I'm still hopeful that Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment 3, once we clear the hurdle with the final Marley Apartment right-of-way vacation, that we can get that certified. I do know that the state is actually reviewing that plan finally because I had an email from their development people asking for a set of the plan. So that means that it's finally gotten to them for review, so it's being looked at now. And I guess the last thing is Thomas and his wife Alicia now have four boys to deal with in their household. So please, when you see him, where he is, give him a pat on the back and, you know, as much support as you can.
Thank you. Mr. Bond?
Yes, two dates to put in your calendar. The 23rd of October is a Monday night and from 6:00 to 8:00 in this room, we will be having the open house for the Bethel and Sedgwick Corridor Plan. And so this is where we're going to have stations set up for the public to come and learn about the project and provide some input for that project. uh, some input for that project. We're doing some direct mailers to a lot of the people who live within proximity of those two corridors, and then we're doing other outreach efforts through Facebook, public notices, et cetera. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that. And then on November 15th, uh, which we, we just set this date today, um, we're going to have an open house in this room for the city's architectural and site design standards that Makers Architecture has been working on with the city, and so that'll be another open house format where we're going to introduce the public to some of the concepts and solicit additional input, uh, on that particular proposal. So, um, we will need to advertise that so that all of you can attend, and we don't have an issue with a quorum, but I would encourage you to, uh, to plan to show up if you're available.
What time is that on the 15th?
Also from 6 to 8 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Gates.
I guess, very quickly, the 26th of October, I believe that the SR 16 study also has an open house, I think it might be here at City Hall. I'll get-
That's a Sunday, pick another day. Or did you say October?
October.
Oh, October.
It's a Thursday.
The 23rd is the Tuesday, right?
I wrote, I-
Monday.
Thursday, yes, Thursday to 26th.
Okay, I wrote down that.
That's put on by Washdott and their team, so, um, I'll get that information to the clerk's office, because again, if, we'll have to advertise that, because I'm sure more than, you'll have a quorum of council members that'll probably be interested in attending that.
Mark, on that one, um, on that Highway 16 study, I, I'm assuming the technical group has been meeting? I have not been aware of a meeting for the, um-
The executive group.
The executive-
Yeah, we had our last tech, we had a technical group meeting last week, um, where they went over the information that was really going to be put forth during the open house, and I think they're going to do the open house before they finalize for the presentation with the executive group.
Okay.
Ms. Gates.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Report. Ms. Floyd.
Just a couple things. If, before you guys leave, if we can have you stop by and sign the letter, and then upon Councilmember Clausen's return, we'll get his signature. And of course, as Mark was saying, we have several invitations out to council right now, so we'll be sending out a couple more for the events you guys were talking about, so just as a reminder, just to get back to us, we can track for our quorum noticing, and that's it.
Thank you. We will move on now to our second citizens' comment period. Comments can be limited to three minutes, and we ask that when you approach the microphone, please state your name for the record.
My name's Alan Browning. I live in this town, I've lived here about 10 years. I'm an attorney, I practice primarily in Kitsepp County, and I have to take out my watch, because I've got three whole minutes. And, um, I came to talk about something else, but now I'm going to talk about the three minutes. And the best thing I can do is just read you what I just posted on Facebook. There's no reporters here, there's two citizens, there's no reporters, I guess there's not much oversight of what you do. So I wrote, "I'm at the Port Orchard City Council meeting for the, the first I've ever attended, and I'm shocked and flabbergasted to discover that the city council only allows three minutes for citizen comments. To me, that means the city council doesn't really want citizen input, they just want the appearance of democracy but not the reality. I was going to talk about the city's predatory parking enforcement, particularly at the courthouse, which is taxation without representation, but now I discovered there's a deeper issue. To me, it's the fundamental contempt that an elected body displays for its citizens who pay its bill, evidenced by their squelching of any hope for public dialogue. You can't have a dialogue between the peasants and their masters in three minutes. That's not enough time for even civil pleasantries and, and courtesy and small talk before getting to the issue." So it's a farce, it's a representation of dialogue rather than really dialogue, and I wish I had the war chest required to run for one of the seats on this council and change it, because, I mean, I came here to talk, and I thought that this council was where a citizen would come and talk to its representatives. That means discussion, that means talk, it can't be reduced to three minutes of soundbites. And so now I'm left wondering, what am I supposed to do to get heard? I can't get heard here. Thanks for nodding your head, I'm, I'm glad you're listening, I appreciate the courtesy of that, but I am at a loss as to what I'm supposed to do when I have an issue, and I came here tonight. It, it took me 10 years to get here. It's, it's 10 years of resentments over getting a parking ticket when the street is empty. Okay, I, that's all, I guess I've used my three minutes.
Not yet.
Okay. In law school, I learned that a law has a, a social policy that behind it, that it's supposed to be enforced. Like when you're in downtown Seattle, they, they enforce parking down there ferociously, and it's in the search of, it, it's for a good, for a ser, for a public goal, which is that one person can't hog a space all day long. So that's valid, that's valid use of police power. But when the street next to the courthouse is empty, and some lawyer or litigant is parked there, and they go five minutes over because they have to work, or they have to talk to a judge, and they get ticketed, and that street is empty, there's no social policy being served there, that's just predation, that's just, that's gotcha capitalism, that you guys taking money because you can, because you've got the police power to do it, and there's no oversight. This is 10 years of resentments talking and hundreds of dollars of parking tickets, and I don't break laws. And I, what am I supposed to do? Three minutes? How, how do I pursue this? Because it's an issue, and I'm, I'm just the crank who was willing to show up and complain, everybody else is docile.
So the three minutes is up, so, but I, to answer your question, all of us are available to talk and speak and meet with you at any time.
That would be nice.
The rules of this particular meeting is three minutes, um, but, but feel free, and I know on our website, all of our contact information's there, and we'd be happy to-
She's very nice, I'll talk to her.
Yep.
And I, I would also, I hold office, or, um, I hold, uh, on the third Tuesday of the month, I hold office hours, but it's by appointment, I just don't come and, and sit, but if you would like to make an appointment and let me know what you want to speak about, I am more than glad to meet with any citizen.
I can speak to the parking issue in a polite and rational way without being heated and dramatic. There is a, there is a valid policy argument for a change in the way you, you run your parking regime.
Well, I guess what I would suggest, that probably the easiest process is the city has a public works mailbox, and so you send an email to the public works mailbox, every one of those complaints gets logged, tracked, and at that point, the public works department determines whether that's a, uh, police matter, a public works matter, or if it goes to the land use committee, and that's really the procedure.
Can I talk to you after the meeting?
I'm just trying to answer your question.
I, I know, but I'm not, I'm not hearing you right now, it, it's not registering. I, I would just like to write down notes from what you tell me at the end of the meeting, if I could. I, I'm just, I appreciate what you're telling me, I just, I would like to talk to you afterwards, and I'll write down what you're saying.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Please.
One of the comments made was that at the planning committee, nobody made any comments about the height of the trees and the changing of the issue. And this goes back to many years of me saying, though you say you want transparency, until you can get, number one, the newspaper, they have a section called garage sales, they have a section called pets, they have a section called, um, jobs, but they don't have a government section. So anytime you put an announcement about a meeting, a person has to go through every single classified ad because it's not easy to find, so nobody knows when anything is happening, so nobody knew to come to that planning commission meeting. There is no way to get good transparent information from the city when you put it in the paper other than reading every classified ad, and that's not right. I think also on your website, there should be an agenda for every meeting, and people should know at least a week in advance so they can figure out if they can get to that meeting on what's going to be discussed, because it is not easy. If you miss a meeting, you don't get the information. I mean, even now, I'm going to stop and ask for the dates because I didn't have a pencil out to write down all that evening meetings that are going to be coming up, but it isn't transparent to hide it in the classified ads. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, all of these meetings are on our website, and I would encourage people to start there so you don't have to fish through the newspaper, because they are, you know, we want them to be very, very visible and in an easy manner to find those, so if you were to check in on those occasionally, I think you stay current. Jerry, we can't hear you.
Nick, Nick, is, are, are your planning commission, um, agendas or whatever put out through one of the email lists that we have? Because I know we have a variety of email lists that citizens can sign up for.
You can sign up to be on that distribution list, I think, through the homepage at the city website, um, and we also put the agendas for the planning commission meetings online, and we, um, so I think that's, and, and I think there's even a, a list of people who subscribe to those, but I'm not, uh, positive off the top of my head.
Yeah, we do have on the page, if you scroll to the very bottom, you can submit, or I should say, subscribe to a whole bunch of lists. The committee meeting agendas and minutes, we typically don't send out through, we just call it the distribution list, but we do post it on, if you go to the, um, Government, City Council, and you go to the committee page, I know they're posted on there, and we try and have it, you know, a couple days beforehand for agendas and minutes, you know, as soon as we're able to get them. You know, if, um, we do have requests to send out the agenda, you know, through our distribution list, we can definitely look into that.
Any additional citizen comments this evening? Okay, then we have no executive session tonight, uh, this meeting is adjourned.